The meeting is now live.
Thank you, Maurice. It's seven o'clock. Welcome, everybody, to the November twenty-second regular meeting of City Council, of Kimberley City Council, being held here on the homelands of the Tenahaw peoples. As I said, welcome, everybody. We have a reasonable agenda tonight. Nothing that's going to keep us too late or get us out too early, so we can take our time as we go through a few of the agenda items here in the beginning. With that call to order, I will ask Maurice if we have any additional late items.
There's no late items, Mr. Mayor.
All right, awesome. Hearing done. Could I have a mover to adopt the agenda? Counselor McBane, thank you, and Counselor Goodwin seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. I should note that Counsel Roberts, while you may see an empty seat in the council chamber, Counsel Roberts is with us on Zoom tonight. Thanks for being here, Sandra. I take it you are calling in from beautiful downtown Penctikton?
Yes, that's right. Waiting for enough gas and enough open road to get home.
Awesome. Thanks for being here tonight. Okay, next up, we have the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on November the eighth. Counselor Dallow moves. Counselor Oakley seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. All right, we have two delegations this evening. First up, we have Fiona De Cole from the Regional District of East Cootney talking about the Emergency Management Program. Welcome, Fiona. You know the routine on delegations. I will give you the two-minute warning as you get close to your ten minutes.
Thank you, your worship and members of council, for making time for me and your agenda today. I'm going to present some context and background about the East Cootney Emergency Management Program, give you an introduction to our team, share an update on our current areas of focus, and an overview of the roles and responsibilities between the RDEK and the city of Kimberley. Could someone please pull up my presentation? Thank you, and we can go to the next slide, please. As you well are aware, climate change is increasing the frequency, duration, and severity of severe weather events. We're seeing that firsthand recently here across our province and in our region. Development in hazardous areas continues, and this creates new risks when we really haven't adequately dealt with existing risks. Vulnerable populations have a much more difficult time preparing for and recovering from emergencies, and the limited government resources must focus on those people who are the most vulnerable, meaning that people who are not vulnerable need to take responsibility for themselves and be prepared for emergencies. Disaster risk reduction is a shared responsibility between residents, businesses, developers, and all levels of government. The provincial government reimburses emergency response costs at one hundred percent of eligible costs and recovery costs at about eighty percent. Grants are often available for mitigation and planning projects. The Emergency Program Act was last updated in nineteen ninety-six. It is long overdue for modernization, and that modernized legislation is anticipated to be introduced in fall of twenty twenty-two. And that being said, the bylaws and agreements that we share with the city of Kimberley, we are planning to update those when the new provincial legislation is modernized. Next slide, please. The major wildfires in two thousand and three prompted many communities in our region to get more organized in emergency management and to coordinate emergency support services volunteers. Here in the East Cootney, it made sense to create three subregions, the Columbia Valley Central and Elk Valley South Country, to share resources and work together cooperatively. That sentiment of cooperation and sharing between communities across our region is the foundation of the East Cootney Emergency Management Program. No community, particularly the smaller ones, are able to fully manage a large-scale emergency or disaster on their own. Because emergencies can happen anytime, anywhere, the cooperative model works very well, and we support one another. This includes our indigenous communities. This cooperative approach is not necessarily the norm across BC, and it's something that we should feel very proud about here. In the last couple of years, the emergencies seem to have been more in the Columbia Valley, with Fairmont debris flooding and a couple of fires to note. But as you can see by this list, over the past ten years, we've had emergencies across our region. The Meacham Creek wildfire is one that you must know very, very well here, before my time, but I've heard a lot about it. Next slide, please. I started my position as Protective Services Manager in January twenty twenty, so just before COVID started. I'm happy to tell you that I moved to Kimberley with my family from North Vancouver, where I worked in a similar position for the past thirteen years. Very happy living in Kimberley, so thank you for having me. This presentation is primarily focused on the emergency management side of Protective Services. I will just take a moment to say that we also work closely with Chief Prasad on fire dispatch. We manage the contract with Clonac Fire Dispatch on behalf of all the communities in the East Cootney, and we also touch base quite regularly on wildfire risk reduction initiatives. As you can see by this org chart, we have a pretty small team. We have our emergency operations coordinator, an emergency planning coordinator, and a wildfire resilience coordinator, as well as our fire chiefs and deputy chiefs for the rural areas. Next slide, please. We're currently working on several regional planning initiatives, and then in a future slide, I'll talk about our operations initiatives. So number one, the East Cootney Evacuation Plan. This is funded through UBCM's Community Emergency Preparedness Fund. In agreement with each community in our region, we applied for a joint grant of close to two hundred thousand dollars to retain a traffic engineering consultant called ISL to prepare evacuation route plans for our region that work together and include evacuating into or receiving evacuees from our neighbors in Alberta and the United States. The second project, the East Cootney Flood and Steep Creek Risk Prioritization Assessment, is funded through the National Disaster Mitigation Program. The value of this grant is four hundred thousand dollars, and we've retained a geotechnical engineering consultant called BGC Engineering to conduct the assessment. Similar assessments have been completed for other regions of BC, including the CSRD and the RDCK. The consultants are currently reviewing existing flood risk assessments and conducting field visits for areas of interest. I have received City of Kimberley's flood hazard information from your engineering team, and we'll make sure that that is included in the assessment. Both of these regional projects are anticipated to be complete in late spring of twenty twenty-two, and they're fully grant-funded. The third planning project, the East Cootney Emergency Plan, was last updated in twenty sixteen, so we are due for a review. Along with the plan will come that bylaw review that I mentioned previously, once that provincial legislation has been introduced. Next slide. Our current operations projects. The main regional emergency operations center is located in Cranbrook, on the top floor of the Teles Building downtown. It's where I'm speaking to you from today. During an emergency, this is where our team gathers along with relevant agency representatives, such as the RCMP, BC Ambulance, Ministry of Transportation, BC Wildfire, Red Cross, and others, to support the emergency responders at the site, called instant commanders. Since COVID, it became increasingly important to be able to function virtually, so we have invested in some technology upgrades and operational processes recently. It's added additional capabilities to communicate effectively with partners in terms of sharing documents, situational awareness, and virtual conferences. Each year, we coordinate and facilitate three subregional emergency exercises or simulations where staff from our partner communities and agencies come together to practice. Last year was a wildfire scenario. This year, we will focus on flooding and evacuations, so we can validate our new regional evacuation plan before it's finalized. Then the third project, Hazard Risk and Vulnerability Analysis. We do have existing HRVAs, and I know so does City of Kimberley, but it's probably time to take another look at those as well and modernize them with current hazards and climate change lens. Next slide. The Emergency Support Services, these are provincial public safety lifeline volunteers. These provincial volunteers are managed and coordinated by local governments across BC. These volunteers provide short-term support for evacuees, such as registering them and listening to what their needs are, helping them to reunite with their family, and then referring them on to social support services, such as meals, accommodation, and other incidentals that they may need, or psychological support services. After that short-term support is typically seventy-two hours, it can sometimes be extended. But after seventy-two hours, we would strike an unmet needs committee made up of a variety of social service agencies, such as the Red Cross, Interior Health, BC Housing, Ministry of Poverty Reduction, and local social support agencies, such as Community Connections or Street Angels, et cetera. With the province is currently modernizing ESS, as well as their Emergency Program Act legislation. They are aiming to digitize and modernize ESS service delivery to provide timely access to supports and services. This allows evacuees to register both in person and online to access services. It's very, very handy, as you can imagine right now with the current disaster. There are evacuees all over the province right now, and they are able to register online, no matter where they are. Next slide, please.
Two-minute warning, Fiona.
Thanks. We have recently transitioned, as of November first, to contract the Red Cross to coordinate the training and management of ESS volunteers in the East Cootney. The RDCK also uses the Red Cross, as do many other local governments in BC. There's many benefits to moving to the Red Cross, particularly having additional pools of volunteers for larger responses. And because the Red Cross makes up a major part of our unmet needs committee, they're able to provide excellent continuity of service beyond seventy-two hours. Next slide. The Emergency Management Program promotes emergency preparedness through a variety of mediums: social media, radio, newspapers, websites, et cetera. I wanted to mention the evacuation notification system here. Any resident or visitor of the East Cootney region, including City of Kimberley residents and visitors, can self-register for the evacuation notification system. Under your profile, you can drop multiple location pins: your home, your cabin, your favorite campsite, your business, your school, et cetera. If there's an emergency that we need to alert residents or visitors about, you will receive a text, email, or phone call, whatever you choose, or all three, within minutes of us issuing the alert. This is compared with many hours that it takes to go door-to-door. It's subscription-based, and so people need to register for it. As you've heard much about in the news lately, the provincial government has a push notification system called Alert Ready. It's currently only used for tsunamis and hurricanes. These are the alarms that override your mobile device when they do tests a couple times a year, and we are very hopeful that local governments will have greater access to this system as an after-action learning from the current flood disaster. Would like to end on the relationship that we share with the city of Kimberley. This is primarily through Chief Prasad, but also with your Communications, Finance, and Engineering Departments. From time to time, we have both administrative and operational roles, but I know that I am out of time, so maybe I'll just end there, and happy to take any questions.
Awesome. Thanks very much, Fiona. Counsel, questions or comments? Counselor Oakley.
Thank you for coming in this evening, Fiona, and also for the wise choice of selecting Kimberley as your location to live. I have a question for you regarding the wildfire resilience coordinator. Is there any education component to that? I've had some folks that are on acreages and stuff out of town and questions around understanding that process better so they can prepare their lands a little bit better. So is there an education component to that?
Through your worship, yes. Great question. There is a big education component through the Fire Smart program, and we have a webpage dedicated to this on the Regional District's website. We also have a number of brochures and do some social media on this as well. The Fire Smart is a provincial program, actually also a national program, and so there is much good information about that, and I'd be happy to take those contacts and pass them along to our resilience coordinator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Oakley. Further? Counselor Roberts, don't want to miss you. Any comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Fiona.
All right, last call. Thanks very much, Fiona. Really appreciate you taking the time, and thank you for your presentation.
My pleasure. Have a nice evening.
All right, you bet. All right, next up, we have Ryan McKenzie, representing the Kimberley Trail Society, providing an update to council. Ryan?
Good evening, good evening, your worship and counsel.
You have ten minutes? In fact, we'll maybe give you eight.
I think I'm more nervous about the shortage of time, so I better get started.
Take it away.
Really just wanted to update council on the Kimberley Trail Society's activities over the past year. We had a fantastic year, and I think it's worth showing one of our supporters all the wonderful things that we're doing around town, so you can start that slideshow. Fantastic. So KTS focuses on cooperation, sustainability, and respect. All those values are really important because we do work with so many different groups and a broad range of land in the Kimberley area. So you can go to the next slide. So we help manage a lot of trail areas. It's not solely us in all these areas, but as you can see from the list, from Lois Creek all the way out to the Pyramid Creek Trails down the Saint Mary's Valley, we help maintain and manage those trail areas, as well as some of the rec sites in the area. And then we work with different groups and community partners, like Rec Sites and Trails BC, the Kimberley Nature Park Society, Friends of Lois Creek. Some of our trails are on tech land, and a partner we've grown a lot of relationship with this year, the city of Kimberley, the Kimberley Alpine Resort, and another partner we've grown a lot with in the past year is the Kimberley Nordic Center. So our reach is really broad, and some groups manage themselves a little bit more, and we're there to support their activities, and other groups rely on us heavily to actually complete maintenance objectives and build projects. Next slide, please. So we had a fantastic year. We're really proud of the projects that we completed this year. Up in the top left-hand corner, you'll see a picture of an aluminum bridge that was most recently completed. That's part of the Matthew Creek Connector Trail, and that leads basically from the nature park all the way over to Bootleg, and that'll form a new section of the TransCanada Trail that removes six kilometers of roadway. Roadway removal is an initiative by the TransCanada Trail to have people be actually on greenway. So this bridge is a really exciting connection to that TransCanada Trail. On the right, we built another. This one's more of a boardwalk, but we worked very closely with the nature park on two big projects, and one was this boardwalk over a wet area. So that is another great example of cooperation and sustainability, because riding and walking through wet areas is never that great for the user or the environment. And then down in the bottom, those are just some of our trail projects. We built a number of reroutes, the longest one being one out on Shapeshifter and Thunder Turkey to mitigate the effects of erosion and the wildfire risk reduction clearing and improve user experience, as well as winter operations. We were in our second year of snowdog grooming, so we groomed loops in Lois Creek and in the nature park, and those were heavily used by walkers. Even skiers enjoyed some of the groom pass and fat bikers as well. Next slide, please. And there was a large portion of our trail network that was impacted by wildfire risk reduction activities. It's already starting to grow back, which is great to see, and there's some new views and some new sites that are in the area, but it didn't come without its impact on the trails. So we worked with the different managers of these trail areas, like rec sites and trails and the nature park, to help mitigate the issues that might come up with trails being exposed to less organic regrowth and no forest canopy, so they dry out in different ways, and then rehabbing the trails post-logging to make sure that they were safe and usable again. Next slide, please. So this is a grand list of a lot of the projects that we supported. This is an example of, on the left, of the different groups that we worked with, and we trained nine new volunteers. We put them through a chainsaw training course so they can go out and help us keep our trails clear. We applied for some new trails and got grants for some other projects, like Electrify the Mountains, that I'll speak to in a few moments. And we actually did a massive trail inventory where we went around all of our trail network and highlighted any sort of features or danger areas and cataloged signage so that we can get a good idea of where to spend our efforts. Beyond that, we designed a new tool that we're selling as a fundraiser and KTS calendar as well, with some nice images of our local trail network. We built a whole bunch of projects. Those are the ones you can see in the middle. I won't go through them specifically. And then we spent a lot of time fixing up trails. That's more than just going and kicking rocks. That's actually spending time with myself, volunteers, and the trail crew, actually fixing up trails, opening up drainages, refurbishing areas that either got rough or loose. And so we reached a lot of different trails this year. Next slide, please. So in total, we had twenty-six-hundred-and-fifty-six trail crew hours. We were very fortunate this year. We were able to hire seven trail crew, and they put in a lot of hours between the end of April, beginning of May, and all the way into August, into those hot months. Some of them were still going. So that provided a lot of employment to our area. We use trail forks for reporting, so people report issues on trails and down trees, as well as when they do work on trails. So we had seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight of those, which is up from previous years, which means people are using the trails, and they're also connecting with us in different ways. And we definitely had a lot of volunteer hours. In previous years, we've had more than this, but again, as you know, COVID held us back from putting on bigger events this year, which is the bulk of those hours, but seven-hundred is still pretty a great number. And in total, we spent one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars in our community on paying trail crew salaries, hiring contractors, and different projects. So that's a good addition to the local economy, we like to hope. Next slide, please. We have a lot of, beyond the partners that we work with on the trails, there's a lot of sponsors around town that see the benefit of the work that we're doing. So here's just a small list of the people that have supported us over the past year, and all these businesses thrive. It's a symbiotic relationship that the trails often help these businesses, restaurants and retail shops, and in turn, they help us. And so this whole trail system and business work really well together. Next slide, please. So what's up for twenty twenty-two? We're going to try and take on slightly less. There was a lot of trail crew to manage this year. You can skip to the next slide. This one will be short. So the next year's big project, as we've had a significant discussion together about, is the Electrify the Mountains. So we've been working hard on that. The routes for Electrify have been flagged. We've actually awarded two of the tenders out, and the bids have been awarded to two very reputable contractors. One is from the area, and another is fairly close up in the Golden Area. We're really excited. They're both very good and longstanding trail builders, so they'll do a fantastic job and meet all the goals of the Electrify the Mountains project. We've also worked to meet all the requirements of the agreement surrounding the Electrify the Mountains grant and been working closely with the city, specifically Jim Hendricks, to work through that and get all the groundwork done, like archaeological reports and things like that to make this project happen effectively. Next slide, please. I think that's it, actually. Yeah. I could keep going and talk about trails forever, so I'll leave it open to any questions that you have.
Counsel. Thanks so much, Ryan. That timing was absolutely perfect. We really appreciate you making that presentation. Counsel. Counselor Roberts, go ahead.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Ryan. I am so excited that you did that inventory. I can't tell you how often I have the opportunity to brag about the trail system around our area and how proud I am of the work that you guys are doing. The inventory would be something I'd like to see made public somehow or other. How many trails do we actually have? How many miles of trails? We actually feel like we've got more miles of trails than we have streets in our city, and I think it just goes to the wonderful work that you and the group are all doing. I'm just really proud of you. Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you. Yeah, we took even a deeper look and cataloged all the little features that might need maintenance over time, and it'll be really valuable moving forward, something that we can update, and I'm happy to share it with anybody that wants to see it.
So Ryan, just on the kilometers of trails, I think I saw a number once where we're pretty close to two hundred kilometers of sanctioned trails. Can you maybe update us on kind of where we're at with that?
Yeah, I would have to go back and look. It's a pretty subjective number, depending on where you draw the boundaries, but it is about one-hundred-and-eighty kilometers a trail the last time I checked, but I could easily get that data for you. Good numbers.
And there were additional trails outside of your purview, though, as well, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I got to tell you, if you take a look at the sponsors and kind of everybody who's lined up behind supporting the Kimberley Trail Society, it really is a testament to how important those one-hundred-and-eighty kilometers are, not only to our residents, but also to the tourism, you know, part of our economy. You guys are doing an awesome job.
Thank you.
Counsel. Counselor Oakley, please.
Ryan, thank you very much for coming in tonight. I really appreciate it. Nice to have the update. A question I have for you is around the Electrify the Mountains. So a few folks have asked me, just mainly out of curiosity, there are folks that are coming in from out of town that stay here periodically or have a condo on the hill, and they would like to, they're just curious. Is there going to be a process for folks to follow the development of that? As that unfolds, is there going to be, is it on your website? Or, you know, some people are like wondering how they actually build these trails. They're kind of curious about it, so I'm just wondering if there's anything if there's anything that's going to be week by week or whatever, that you can, you'll be doing updates for people.
Yeah. We've been picking away at building a website for the project, and that'll inform kind of the overall ideas and roots of the project, and then we'll be updating once the project actually gets going in the spring with the actual shovels hitting the ground. We'll be updating on social media and through various avenues.
Is that on Facebook, then? Or is that where you're, when you refer to social media, whereabouts will that be?
We'll probably share through the Kimberley Trail Society site. I'd have to talk to Sustainable Kimberley whether we're going to make an actual Electrify the Mountains Facebook page. That's just another level of management that we'll have to sort out as we go.
Thank you. All right, further, counsel? Counselor Dallow, go ahead.
I just want to applaud you, Ryan, for the, not only the amount of skills, but the execution of those skills and the tremendous work that you accomplish. You're definitely a champion within your role, so I just want to say that I appreciate the work you do.
Thank you. Thanks for all the support.
All right, with that, thanks so much, Ryan. We really appreciate the update. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, counsel. Wonderful evening.
All right, take care. All right, that's it for delegations this evening. Let's move forward with bylaws, and we have several relating to the twenty-twenty-two financial plan. First up, we have you. Be in there, Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's awesome. So can I maybe bother you to push the podium into the centerpiece there? That way the camera will catch you and make your voice a little bit better. A little more. I think that'll work. That's perfect. Awesome. Okay, first up tonight is bylaw twenty seven oh five, which is the City of Kimberly Flat Tax Bylaw. It's for consideration of first three readings this evening. I have a mover to that effect. Counselor Goodwin, thank you. And Counselor McBain seconds. Discussion. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a number of these bylaws tonight have resulted from the October fourth special budget meeting. This one included. So at that meeting, council provided direction to staff to prepare an amendment to the flat tax bylaw to reduce the the level of flat tax on improved residential properties from three hundred and eighty six dollars to three hundred and six dollars. And to leave the flat tax on vacant residential lots at three hundred and eighty six dollars for the twenty twenty two fiscal year. So council moves a recommendation and that ends up adopting this bylaw. It'll be the sixth time since two thousand and sixteen that we've reduced the the flat tax on residential lots with improvements by eighty dollars. So in two thousand and sixteen, it was at seven hundred and eighty six dollars. And this bylaw proposes that it be reduced to three hundred and six dollars. I've got a few calculations down below on the last page of the staff report there. These are based on twenty twenty one tax rate. So they're just estimates at this point in time, but so a house at the average assessed value, which I believe was around three hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. I shouldn't see a an adjustment to their property taxes as a result of this. Their flat tax will be reduced by eighty dollars, but and the variable tax will be increased by eighty dollars to to offset that. As you get into the lower value assessed properties, so for example, a home assessed at two hundred thousand dollars, we'll see a reduction in their taxes of approximately thirty three dollars. Whereas, for example, a home assessed at five hundred thousand dollars, we'll see an approximate thirty eight dollar increase to the their overall property tax bill. So if council moves a recommendation, I'll bring this file back for consideration of adoption at the December thirteenth meeting.
All right, thank you, Jim. Counsel. Questions or comments? Okay, hearing done. Call the question. All those in favor. Those opposed? Counselor McBain and myself are opposed. The motion is carried. Next up, we have bylaw number twenty seven oh six. Had to do a second look on that. I saw oh five on the first one and it looked very similar on the second. My apologies, counsel. The City Kimberly Sewer Rates and Regulations Bylaw. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Kiddo, thank you. And Counselor Dellum seconds. Summary, please, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the October fourth special budget meeting, council passed a resolution based on staff's recommendation to apply an inflationary increase of two percent to the current sewer rates for twenty twenty two. So if that is passed, it would increase the monthly sewer rate by approximately seventy cents, two dollars and six cents per quarter from hundred and two dollars and forty six cents to a hundred and four dollars and fifty two cents. And it would increase the overall sewer fund revenues by about thirty nine thousand dollars per year. And again, the council moves a recommendation. I'll I'll bring this bylaw back on December thirteenth for consideration of adoption.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments, counsel? I think I'll just make a quick comment because the the increases to the to the sewer rates over the last few years have been really you know, in an effort to get us caught up to where the new wastewater treatment plant operational costs are going to be. And so by the time we get that new plant in place with the changes that we've been making over the last two or three years, we're not going to be looking at any major changes to sewer rates at the time that the new plant comes online. So it's a little bit of pain over a number of years in order for us to get to where we need to be. And are we just about there with respect to that operating increase, Jim?
We should be. I mean, it remains to be seen. If the numbers could change over time, we're anticipating the the operating expenses are going to be about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year with that new plant. So the eight percent increases that we saw over the last three years have brought the sewer fund revenues to the point where if we just stick with inflationary increases going forward, we we should be okay unless there are any significant changes that we're we're not aware of at this point in time.
All right, excellent. Great work on that. Any further comments, counsel? Hearing done. Call the question. All those in favor. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next up, bylaw twenty seven oh seven, which is the Kimberly Waterworks Rates and Regulation Bylaw. And this is again for first, second and third reading. Mover, please. Counselor Kiddo, thank you. Counselor Roberts seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as with the sewer fund bylaw, sewer rates bylaw, council passed a resolution at the October fourth budget meeting to increase the the flat rate water fees by two percent per year. So that would increase them. Just looking for my numbers here. Yeah, so that would increase those rates by about eighty cents per month, by two dollars and forty cents a quarter, from a hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty eight cents to one twenty one sixty eight, which would bring in approximately forty five thousand dollars in new revenue. Council also passed a resolution at that same meeting to increase the the bulk water rate. We provide bulk water to primarily to tech and RCR. RCR for snowmaking and irrigation on Trickle Creek Golf Course. Over the last number of years, council has been increasing that rate. It was identified a few years ago that that rate was disproportionately low in comparison to what the what residential and commercial properties were paying. So we've been incrementally increasing that that rate over time. So the the ten percent increase that we're asking here would bring that rate up to two dollars and twenty seven cents per thousand per thousand gallons of water. We sell, two thousand twenty, we sold twenty nine million gallons of water through the bulk rate, brings in about sixty five thousand dollars per year. So this ten percent increase would bring in just over six, six thousand dollars, sixty one hundred dollars in additional revenue. And again, I'll bring this file back. Council passes the recommendation on December thirteenth.
All right, thanks, Jim. Go ahead, Counselor Dellum.
So down in our later item, the net operating cost of the water fund was a little bit higher than budget. Is that a trend that's not going to continue and that we're comfortable maintaining this increase? Because it, I'm not sure if Scott or Chris can speak to the cause. It's a hundred, one hundred and twenty three point four percent of what the budget was. So I don't know if.
Is that, you're looking at the financial update report?
Yes. Yeah. Okay. So I just didn't know if that was a bit of an anomalous piece that people had used considerably more water during that heat wave or?
Yeah, I'll I'll have a closer look when we get there, Counselor Dellum. I actually thought the water expenditures were were under there. But in in the long range plan that we've got going forward, if we stick with the two percent increases, again, as long as there's no surprises, we we should be okay funding that that utility going forward.
Okay. And it could be that I'm reading wrong.
Have a close look at that.
Thank you.
Get to that. Yep.
Further counsel. Okay, we call the question on first, second and third reading. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next up is the five year financial plan bylaw. Last in this series of financial bylaws. And that is that council give first, second and third reading to the five year financial plan. Counselor McBain moves and Counselor Roberts seconds. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is an amendment, the second amendment that's been before council with regards to the twenty twenty one to twenty five five, twenty twenty five year financial plan. Amendments to the financial plan by law are permitted at any time as long as they're made by bylaw. And typically, they come about as a result of more better information becoming available subsequent to the adoption of the financial plan by law. We've had a number of of changes that have come to light since the adoption of that bylaw. I'm not going to go through all of these, just going to hit on on the big ones. So the the first one is the the capital plan. On November first, council was presented with it, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six capital plan. And there have been a number of changes in there, particularly to twenty twenty two as a result of the scope of some of the projects expanding, some of the unit costs increasing as a result of COVID shortages and some new projects being added to the the plan. So what I'm asking council to do with this section here is to amend the five year financial plan bylaw to include the new capital project list, which will allow staff to get ahead, get ahead of some of these projects by getting some tenders out early. Hopefully, we can, Dellum, awarding the projects early and entering into contracts earlier in the construction season, which we hope will result in more bids and more competitive bids. So that's the first piece of it with the capital plan. So about four days after council approved the capital plan at that November first meeting, we we got a couple of different pieces of news that drastically changed what council had approved. The first one of those was with regard to the fire station truck base that we're anticipating building in the parking lot adjacent to City Hall. We had six hundred thousand dollars in the budget for that project. That was a preliminary estimate. In twenty twenty one, we had a budget to have an architect have a look at that project and put together some construction cost estimates for us. That estimate came in at at one point three million dollars. Hundred and twenty three percent higher than what we had anticipated previously. So seven hundred thousand dollars higher. So based on that, what staff is recommending that is that we amend the bylaw to pull that project out, take a step back. The chief Prasad is is working on a long range plan for the fire department. So what we're proposing is that he bring that forward at some point in twenty twenty two. Have a look at kind of a bigger picture plan. Chief Prasad, I see, is is online. If anybody has any questions for him. The other piece of that, one of the big reasons why we were building that facility is so we didn't have to order custom trucks. The bays that we have at the fire hall at City Hall here are short enough that we have to order custom trucks so they'll fit in there. So because we're not building these truck bays, we're proposing not to build a truck base. The chief has got some quotes on some fire trucks. And it's two hundred thousand dollars more than what we had anticipated on a on a regular truck or a custom truck. Maybe I'll just pause there. Counsel has any questions? Again, chief Prasad's on the line. I can speak to the financial department.
Counselor McBain.
Yeah. So this is, I think, something I brought up when we were going through the thing and I saw around numbers and that kind of concerned me. So now that I guess that we have numbers, I Rick, I guess you're on the line. So do you feel like we've got a, we're we're going to have to drastically change gears here? Or are you 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 thinking we should, that you would like to try to stay the course? But you know, now that you've got a better feel for the numbers, you know, go in the same direction you were going, but maybe over a longer period of time. Just curious.
Yeah. Well, we we've really got to sit down and come up with options, I think, that the that will fit the community and how it's growing and and what our needs are in the core. For instance, the ladder truck, one of the big reasons we looked at this move or or to build those bays was to move the ladder truck up into the city core. That is where that truck should be. That was one of the reasons. The other reason was, of course, to eliminate the need to consistently buy trucks that are modified to fit into those fire bays that we have. So now I think what we need to do is, and and what I am working on is just coming up with, what are our options? Either consolidate the two fire stations into a central location in Kimberly. You know, and that would be a long term solution. The other would be to keep the two kind of stations at each end of town. That actually has some operational benefits as well. But what are the costs associated with upgrading one of the fire halls so that we can get the ladder truck up here? Those are things that are, they're really going to be difficult to sort out. And it's going to take a little extra work on our behalf and in consultation with some of the contractors and and just to see, you know, what we can do with our current facility. So maybe there can be some modifications made there, but it's not looking good at this point. Yeah, there's a lot of kind of decisions that are going to have to be made over the next four or five years. You know, obviously, this COVID really kicked us in the butt on this one. You know, when we did start out, the regional district, I wish Fiona was on here, built a very similar station to what we're looking for, a bays. And they were in the three to four hundred thousand dollar range, right? And that that happened in twenty, if I remember right, I think that was around the twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen build. So it was right about the time we really started looking at this project. You know, we thought, well, we can put in a hundred percent increase in costs over that and we should be fine. We did talk with the architect at the beginning of the project when he was working. He said, yeah, you know, you're pretty close to where we want to be. And when they finally pulled everything together, talked to the contractors, supply chain issues, labor shortages and other things, the costs have just gone out of out of sight for us. So, you know, we've, we're going to look, I'm going to be proposing several solutions, some of them shorter term. You know, more temporary versus long term, more expensive solutions. But again, it's it's, we're trying to map it all out and make sense of it all at this point in time. You know, we've got the unpredictability of population, downtown core density. We've got a lot of things that are kind of going to have to come together. And hopefully that plan will map it all out. But that's all I can comment on at this point in time.
Further.
So when, just back up here a second, Rick. So when did the architect say that you figured you were about good? There was a year out?
It was a year ago when we started this process.
And they were a hundred and twenty three percent off.
Yeah, like the the cost estimates that we have, we've actually provided to the our city, the project manager, so that he can update his kind of inventory of what everything's going to cost for the projects that we currently have in the books. Because they are, they are quite a bit higher than than what we saw, you know, three hundred and sixty five or or well, I should say a year and a half ago. They're quite a bit higher.
Further. Comments, counsel? So so I have a couple. I guess, Rick, there is always a tendency to look for, you know, kind of the shorter term, less expensive fix. The fact is that we're dealing with ancient buildings and it's not just about the fire hall. I mean, we also have search and rescue, you know, that are limping along with facilities that we're providing them here that are completely inadequate. There are other communities, Creston being one that's relatively close to us, that in the past couple of years have looked at more of an integrated type facility. I don't know exactly what they did or kind of what was behind the strategy. But part of, I think, the investigation that needs to be, needs to be brought to bear here is solutions at both ends of the spectrum. Because it, you know, especially with costs going up the way they are as rapidly as they are and inflation looking to be a serious issue for the next several years. You know, looking at doing it right and biting a bullet up front, you know, may be, may be a valid strategy.
Well, and I agree with you on that, Mr. Mayor. And and, you know, Creston has had their challenges. When they started their fire hall project, they were looking at budgets of around six million dollars. When they finally went out to tender, I believe they were at thirteen million. That's what came back. They had to go back and revisit the whole project. They had to line up borrowing to help come up with the shortfall that they had originally budgeted. You know, they that that turned out to be quite the experience for them. The other part of it is, you know, fire halls are, the new evolution of fire halls aren't necessarily a standalone fire hall. It can be a combination. Buildings above them can be residences, commercial space. There's all kinds of There's all kinds of things that can be done. So, you know, I am exploring, you know, what does some of these look like? What are the, you know, how reasonable is it to have people living above a fire hall? Can we create housing and help address some of the housing shortages we have? Can we look at energy efficient buildings? One of our biggest obstacles, though, or where do we do, you know, where would we do this? You know, the land isn't becoming, you know, more plentiful in Kimberly. It's disappearing at a rate, you know, as we develop. New buildings are going in, it's creating a higher density, yet it's eating up any land that's suitable for this type of project, so. So it's, it's a balance for sure.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I appreciate your comments around Creston. I mean, we're going through the same thing with wastewater treatment plant right now. No matter what the projects are, you know, we have our challenges with respect to predicting, you know, how long that's going to take, especially when these projects go over a period of years. I guess, I guess my, my point is more around thinking outside the box and looking at things that you know, may not be obvious, as you had articulated a couple of points there just a moment ago. I think it's important that we do that.
Yes, absolutely.
The other, the other advantage at looking at some partners like search and rescue or maybe even ambulance services, in other words, an emergency services kind of center is broader availability of grant money. If, if those types of partnerships are included. So it's fairly complex analysis and we appreciate you and look forward to your report. Any, any idea when that's coming back?
Well, I've got several pages right now and I'm reviewing it. I'm actually going to engage with someone that that has worked on a project like this and we're going to share information back for it, just so that, you know, I'm making sure that things are relevant in there. It really needs a good polish before it gets out there at this point in time. And I definitely, it's been long enough in the works that I'm going to have to update some of the information that I put in there originally.
All right. Thanks, chief. Last call for questions. All right, hearing none. Thanks, Rick. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay, on to new business. And first up is the snow and ice maintenance plan for twenty twenty one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Just finish up on this report and then we'll
Okay.
Give this
All right, Jim.
Nope, no problem. I'm just going to touch on one more project on here. So another piece of news that we got after council approved the capital plan was that the the grant application that we had submitted for the civic center slab and boards had been waiting on since October twenty twenty has been denied. So what we're proposing is that both the slab and board replacement and the chiller are replacing, replacement at civic centers coupled with the curtly ring chiller both be deferred to twenty twenty three from twenty twenty two to allow us some time to search out another grant opportunity.
Plan B. Or is this one Plan X?
Yeah, it may get to the point. The Parks and Facilities Manager has she's doing a building condition assessment of that facility as we speak here, and if that comes back and says that, you know, we need to get this stuff done now as opposed to continually looking for grants, we may have to revisit and try to find another way to fund these projects.
Right. All right. Excellent.
But, yeah, so I'm not going to go through the rest of these projects, but, yeah, so by law, it's be forecast for consideration for
Anything further for Jim? Hearing none, we'll call the question on first, second and third reading. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thanks, Gus.
Thanks very much, Jim. See you in two weeks. Two items. Okay, so first up, we have the snow and ice maintenance plan and it is for receipt. Mover please. Counselor Goodwin and Counselor Kittle seconds. Any discussion on this, counsel? Is there anything you want to highlight, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counsel. No, not a whole lot of large items in here that are new. I just would like to draw your attention to the three bullet items in there, though. Those are the main changes for this year. We brought on a, what we're calling a winter maintenance schedule, and that's providing coverage for us on weekends. So we'll have someone out there taking care of the roads and snow and ice conditions. Saturday and Sunday mornings, early at five AM, they'll be out there till one o'clock in the afternoon. And they'll carry on with that program through Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So that'll give us an opportunity to have people out in the field on weekends, which will provide a much better service for the community on those weekend snow days. The other piece that we've added is the schedule for the trail maintenance machine. Previously, we were on a, on a schedule that didn't see anything laid out in a particular order of day one, day two, day three, et cetera. So we've added that to just provide some information to the public as to what our, what our goals are for that particular piece of equipment. And give people an idea of when they could expect to see that machine rolling by. And just some minor other changes in here, updates to equipment and manpower and all those kinds of things, but ultimately, at this point, you know, we've been through this document quite a few times and we're feeling like we have it relatively polished now.
All right, excellent, Chris. Can you make a comment on the policy? I noticed the policy, despite updates, you know, every year to the, to the document, this policy, kind of, how does that relate to things? I notice it's dated nineteen seventy nine. And I'm just wondering, actually nineteen ninety eight, I beg your pardon. I'm just wondering if it isn't time to update that?
Yeah, certainly, we could update it. Right now, we aren't seeing a need to change too much that's in that document. As far as snow levels or that sort of thing. But certainly, we could give that a refresh, bring it up to more of a modern look and standard in there, if you like.
I, I think that would be useful. You know, I, you know, for example, just in terms of clarity, regular working hours is defined in the policy as seven AM to three thirty PM. And kind of in the, in the document, the changes that were made, I think it says five AM is kind of regular hours when we're on snow patrol. It's just, it's just some areas like that that perhaps could use a little more clarity.
Yep, for sure. And I will clarify, our regular work hours still are seven to three thirty. That's when the majority of the workforce is out, out in the field. We just have three individuals that will be out on the early shift, the five AM start.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Appreciate that.
No worries.
Counsel, further comments? Go ahead, Counsel Oakley.
Thanks for the update and the information, Chris. I just have had one inquiry from a couple of parents through the winter, last winter, so I'm going to raise the issue right now while we're discussing this. There's just a tiny pinch point from Morrison Sub on the hairpin of Fourth Avenue. So when you come, when the kids are walking to school in the morning, and it's a heavy snow morning and Fourth Avenue is plowed by the grader usually. Some of the younger kids that walk to school and they tuck down in behind Santana Hall out of Morrison Sub, when they're coming across the hairpin of Fourth Avenue there to get below Santana Hall, that's a pinch point and they end up walking on the road on the highway. And there are just, a couple of parents asked if there's any way is that fence, can they, you know, is there any way to clear that a bit for the kids to safely walk by there? So that's all, just a question from a couple.
Yep, for sure. So you're talking the, the spot there just above the the portal that enters the, the original.
Yeah, yeah, just for, you know, the young kids that are struggling with deep snow and and end up on the highway, so, or in the, you know, on the road.
Yep, yeah, you know, we try to make sure that we keep that widened out as much as we possibly can with the grader whenever it goes by. You know, typically, we have that route plowed early with the plow trucks and then the grader comes by a little bit later and, and widens that out. So we'll mention it to the roads manager to see if we can pay a little closer attention to that.
Thanks, Chris. I think I'm going to mention it to Troy as well in the future. That's probably, it should be, you know, a trail or something. I don't know. Pedestrian or something in the future to plan for that. I think it's just, it's a spot that's fairly dangerous right there.
Thanks, Counselor.
Anyway, thank you. Appreciate that.
I do have one other question, Chris, and that is under, under equipment. Do you have everything you need? Are you wanting for anything?
I think we've done a pretty good job of asking for the things that we need in the twenty twenty budget, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now's the time to speak up.
Yeah, we, we have already started researching for equipment for this year and I think we'll be able to make sure that we have everything we need at this point.
All right, awesome. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate the time. Call the question on receipt, counsel. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next up, we have the January to September financial update report. Glad you didn't go too far, Jim. Could I have a mover for receipt? Counselor Dallum, thank you, and Counselor Goodwin seconds. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to provide a brief overview of this document. So this is provided to counsel is just an interim update of the revenues and expenditures through the third quarter of the year, just so you're not waiting until the financial statements are produced to find out where we're at. So first three quarters were seventy five percent of the way through the year, so you look at the percentages column on the budget variance summary, the first page of that document. And, you know, we should be relatively close to seventy five percent. There's a few areas on the revenue side, parks and facilities and the fire department are quite a bit under budget. Parks and facilities, just due to the extended facility closures as a result of COVID. In the fire department, the revenues are down because the forest fuel management, forest management, just due to the weather that we had over this past summer, not a lot of that work occurred, so we didn't get the grant funds to pay for it. The expenditure side of things, everything's looking relatively reasonable here. The water, Counselor Dallum, I saw on the next page where you got that one twenty three percent and that that is a little misleading. I can understand.
If I may, Jim, I apologize. I, yeah, I think I'd cross eyes by the time I worked and I that it was seventy five percent of the income is what's offset that.
Exactly, yeah. And on the expenditure side of things, water is, it's quite low. Forty eight percent of budget. There was a lot of routine maintenance work, budgeted maintenance work that took place this year. There was a lot of big capital projects and there was a lot of manpower shortages as well with COVID and just vacation, so not a lot of that work took place. Human resources is also low. It's down below fifty percent. We had some retirements, budgeted some some payments associated with that that didn't come to fruition this year. On the capital side of things, once we get into the fourth quarter, you'll see that percentage start to come up. A couple million dollars worth of that relates to the projects like the Civic Center slab and boards replacement and the Center sixty four, both of which are being deferred into twenty twenty two. So those aren't going to happen and that's part of the reason why those numbers are low there, but yeah, there's nothing really jumping out in this report that's causing me any concern at this point in time, but happy to answer any questions, counsel.
Counselor? Everything is pretty clear.
Okay.
Call the question on receipt, favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next up, we have the procurement report for the same period, January to September of this year. Could I have a mover for receipt, please? Counselor Kittle, thank you, and Counselor Dallum seconds. Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Yes, it's fairly self explanatory, this report. The purpose of it is really just to provide some transparency to counsel and the general public with regards to some of the larger projects and who we awarded those contracts to. For contracts up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the C O has the ability to approve those and it works its way on down the line where the managers have the ability to authorize twenty five thousand dollars. Anything above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars comes to counsel for a resolution. So you can see a few of those on, on the report.
Thanks, Jim. So the annual road rehab program, we doubled up on that this year?
Yeah, what happened with that is we had we put out the initial tender on that and the unit prices, we were quite surprised that they were low, unlike just about everything else this year. So we were able to double up, essentially increase, do a bunch more work because the unit prices were low.
Well, I got to tell you that I hear all around this year about the work that's been done on, on roads. It has been noticeable. And, Chris, I see you're still on there. A great work on the roads update. This has just been a great year. The, the community has noticed it and thanks for all the great work.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, questions? Comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thanks, Counsel. Thank you, Jim. Now, don't go too far. There is one more here. Oh, I have the property tax penalty reversal request. And the, the motion is that counsel deny the request. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Kittle, thank you, and Counselor Goodwin seconds. We get at least one of these every year and it's for purposes the public, in any event, I guess we should go through and explain what's going on here.
Yeah, so the, the report itself is provided to counsel in response to a letter that was received from a property owner here in Kimberly that had a tax penalty applied to their account because of a late payment. And we don't have the authority as a local government to reverse the tax penalty. We have to that the process is, if somebody wants to to pursue that, they write a letter addressed to mayor and counsel asking that the penalty be reversed by its rationale. If counsel thinks it's a good enough reason, counsel sends along a recommendation to the inspector of municipalities, asking them to reverse the penalty. If the inspector thinks it's a good enough reason, they will issue an order to the local government, so they actually send a letter as an order authorizing us to reverse, essentially reverse tax revenue, write off tax revenue. So that's it. They make it an orders process. It's, it's not our process. It's provincial government process, but I think it's that way for, for a reason. This particular property owner indicates that they they didn't receive a tax notice and they overlooked payment of their taxes in July and therefore feel that a hundred and seventy five dollar eighty eight cent penalty be reversed. There's, the province provides a bit of a one pager on property tax penalties and the reasons that a penalty can be written off. And what they say is that penalties on municipal property taxes are only written off when avoiding the penalties impossible. So they, they give circumstances such as sickness, travel, bank error, mail strike are not adequate. Justification to have penalties written off, so.
Are not adequate?
Are not adequate. So I would suggest that in this case, even the council were to ask the inspector to reverse the penalty, they would look at it and say, you know, if they don't think a mail strike is sufficient justification, then they're certainly not going to think that you know, these folks overlooking their, their taxes would be good enough justification, hence my recommendation.
All right, thanks, Jim. Counselor McBeath.
I would say further to that, too. It's, it's the same process every year, right? Like, you know, we, we do the same thing every year, so.
Yeah, and these, these folks have owned the property for a few years, so it wasn't new to the tax state.
Okay, thank you. Further comment? All right, so all those in favor of denial? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thanks for that, Jim. Last up, well, almost last up, we have the check run. A couple, three check runs, actually, in the amount, total amount of three hundred and ninety two thousand nine hundred and sixty one dollars and fifty one cents. I have a mover, please. Counselor Dallum moves. Seconded, Counselor Goodwin. I was thinking Counselor Roberts. I saw your hand and I stutter stepped over to Counselor Goodwin.
Mr. Mayor, it's pretty much business as usual, although we do, did purchase a new columbarium that might be of interest. So that'll
That's right.
In addition to the, to the
To the cemetery.
Yeah, cemetery. Yeah, cemetery.
Awesome. All right, thanks, councillor Roberts. And of course councillor Roberts weighs in on that because she's the one that signs the checks and oversees, um, from council's point of view, the, uh, the spending of that money. And we thank you for your service, councillor Roberts.
Uh, you're very welcome.
Okay, we'll call the question. Uh, all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, we have, uh, four items of correspondence this evening. Uh, three that require or are asking for, um, action of some kind. So we'll take receipt, uh, move receipt on those three items first. Uh, councillor Oakley moves and councillor Kiddo seconds. Um, discussion. So first up, uh, we have the email from, uh, uh, Levania Roja, uh, with regard to fireworks. Basically, there is a, uh, a petition circulating, uh, that, uh, is looking to, uh, basically ban fireworks. And they are looking for us to support, uh, that effort, that petition. Could I have a comment? Go ahead, councillor.
I would support it. I think it, I think fireworks are outdated and silly, uh, uh, to be honest with you. Um, but, you know, I, I get it. People, people enjoy them. Um, but I don't know. I, I just, I don't, I don't, I understand, I, I, I'm all for regulated, um, uh, events where, you know, a fire department is on site or whatever, and you're having fireworks for some kind of celebration, but, you know, people just blasting off fireworks just willy-nilly is.
Yeah, that's something I've never supported. So, um, is, uh, the chief still on? Yeah, he is, Rick. Uh, are, are, um, permits not required for all fireworks?
Uh, permits can only be issued to, uh, uh, when um, an application comes in showing insurance, uh, showing that a professional is, uh, uh, has a fireworks plan, uh, that the fireworks are bought from a, um, a licensed dealer, that they're being stored safely, and there is a fee attached to it. So individuals in town, um, probably won't be using fireworks. Or for all intents and purposes, they're banned for individual use and we have banned sale within town. So, uh, really the only ones that have made application in the last, uh, few years that I'm aware of have been the ski hill, uh, for their New Year's Eve celebration that they have. And, uh, last year they didn't do it. So we have received no applications, therefore we have not approved any firework use within the community.
Okay, so we're, we're pretty much, we pretty much have fireworks in hand, then?
Yes, they're banned. That, that doesn't mean they're not being used. It's be, we difficult time finding people that are, that are violating the bylaw. Um, just in that they go off, by the time we get there, they're gone, or we don't get reports from neighbors. Uh, we do have potential finds it.
Yeah, that's an enforcement issue and with any bylaw, you always have an enforcement issue and catching everybody, you know, at, at a point in time is a difficult thing to do. I think the point is from a overall bylaw point of view, we have fireworks covered.
Yes, absolutely. I, I don't see any need to add any, uh, uh, more restrictions to that in that, uh, we do permit it for licensed events. That's about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, my, my comments were, were, were solely just on individuals, you know, shooting. It had nothing to do with, you know, right, your organized, regulated, things like that.
Okay. Um, do we have a mover? Just to receive. Then we'll move on to, uh, the, uh, the second, uh, regarding uh, remembrance day ceremony. What was the, uh, the action on this one?
Close the street.
Oh, for closing the streets. So, um, so typically those streets are closed.
So I, I could.
Could you comment on that? Yeah.
I, I understand it's not the, the city's, uh, responsibility to have those traffic measures in place and with the PHO orders and the, the current climate, we certainly didn't expect the turnout that we had this year, which, you know, was a, a wonderful double-edged sword that, uh, we truly appreciated having everybody out. And had we known, uh, I definitely would have been putting forward an application to have those measures in place. Um, likely going forward, what's going to come is a application from Military Ames to the granting process for an in-kind grant to actually have this happen in kind. Um, and in partnership with the city, so. Uh, this is not the first I've heard of this issue. There was, uh, more than a couple of people that, uh, felt that we had dropped the ball on that one, but obviously we, like I say, we just didn't realize that it was going to be so well attended.
Yeah, it was, uh, bit of an anomaly this year, uh, for that reason, for sure. So, um, do we need to do anything with this?
I don't think so. I think we have, uh, a partnership potential coming up that'll deal with this well.
Yeah. Is everybody cool with that? Okay, awesome. We'll move on to the next one, uh, which is the, uh, the Wildside Youth Climate Corps project. So, um, so Tim has volunteered to, uh, come as a delegation, um, and talk to us about the project. Um, go ahead, councillor Goodwin.
Uh, they're, they're putting in an application for funding and the deadline is December second. So it may be we should just write a letter of support. They're working with Bob Gray, which is our consultant that's doing all our fire mitigation work, so I don't think we can go too far wrong. I don't think Bob would let them do anything that they shouldn't be doing, so.
Agreed.
I, I would offer that the CAO or the mayor could write a letter of support before that deadline.
We have a seconder. Councillor Oakley, uh, further discussion, council? Very none. Call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. I missed that December second date. Thanks, councillor Goodwin. Okay, um, with that then, we'll, uh, call receipt on all three of those items or, um, call the question on receipt, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. And finally, uh, uh, a motion to receive the, uh, email from Kerry Reese. Councillor Goodwin moves and councillor Dalham seconds. Do we have any discussion on this? Call the question, all those in favor? Motion is carried. All right, that moves us to a question period. So, uh, this is the point in the meeting where the public, uh, may call. Anybody who's watching us on the City of Kimberly YouTube channel can call in and ask questions with regard to anything that we have discussed or is on the agenda for this evening. If you have a comment or a question, you can call one eight hundred seven four one seven one eight zero. And when prompted, the meeting number is one four six seven seven eight zero six four one. I hope you have a pencil and are writing that down. I will repeat that. The phone number is eight hundred seven four one seven one eight zero. The meeting number is one four six seven seven eight zero six four one. So while we are waiting to see if anybody is going to call in, we'll, uh, do a roundtable on councillor, uh, items. Uh, councillor Dalham, we'll start with you.
So, uh, as presented earlier, the Kimberly Trail Society continues to do amazing work and support the community and the surrounding area. Um, as well as, uh, Center sixty-four, Center for the Arts, has been doing very well with their gallery. Uh, currently there's, uh, a pottery, well, I, I shouldn't say currently. Currently, at the time of our last meeting, there was a, uh, pottery show on and, um, the other piece that's quite exciting is that the, um, the pottery is really taking off in there and there's really, there's been some renovations. So the bath, there's some updates to the bathrooms, as well as the weavers are, um, coming to new agreements with the center to, uh, continue their work. So it, uh, it's nice to see some traction on the arts.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. Nigel?
Nothing to report this week, Mr. Mayor.
Are things at the clinic?
Busy.
So this is good?
Yeah, it's just really, uh, it's great to see third doses now coming out. And with the, uh, announcement that the vaccine's been approved for children, I'm pretty excited to start seeing the kids roll in.
Yeah, that's excellent.
Seeing the end of this pandemic.
Yeah, it, it is great news. Uh, as we were discussing earlier, we, uh, on the twelve, uh, plus, uh, first doses, we finally hit ninety percent, uh, you know, which is pretty awesome. Uh, we were stuck at eighty-nine for what seemed like weeks. Uh, and catching up on the, uh, on the backend with the, uh, second doses as well, so, uh, we've, the community's done an awesome job. Yep. Uh, councillor McBain?
Uh, nothing to report other than we have a, uh, a health center meeting on Wednesday, correct, councillor?
Yeah.
Anything, uh, on the agenda that looks interesting?
There's actually lots of things tentatively going on at the health center, but nothing is disclosed yet.
Alged, okay, awesome.
Very secretive.
Yeah, just kidding. A- anything further?
No.
Councillor Oakley?
Uh, no meetings to report, but, uh, I am getting my annual flood of emails, uh, from various individuals explaining to me why their community grant applications receive one hundred percent funding. That's an annual thing. I don't know if anyone else gets, uh, the odd prompt, but anyway. Just, uh, uh, it's annual, uh, grant, uh, you know, the grants.
You're a lightning rod.
It's, uh, it's hilarious. Anyway, no, no meetings to report.
Well, I think, I think it goes to show how important, you know, to various, uh, like many organizations in the community, that that community grant program is.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Councillor Goodwin?
Uh, no, uh, Health Centers Society meeting. We have a Kimberly Community Development Society meeting the following week. Um, as part of the winding down of that group, but it's nothing to report.
All right, awesome. And, uh, I won't go through what was a long, long list over the last couple of weeks of meetings, um, uh, with actually lots of developers, uh, both those that are already have work underway here in town, plus others that are looking at the community. Um, certainly, uh, there has been no slowdown in interest in, uh, in, uh, in the community and investment in the community, so. Um, you know, it's pretty awesome. Uh, stay tuned. Uh, the ones that we don't know about will be bubbling to the surface here over the next several months, I'm sure.
Don't forget Sandra.
Nope, I'm coming there. Councillor Roberts, you get the last word.
Oh, that's pretty unusual, isn't it? So I, uh, I thought you'd be interested to know I was able to book my third COVID shot over here in Penticton.
Ooh, cool.
Which, which I had originally planned to do at home. Uh, and I hope that I'm able to struggle over on Wednesday. It looks like I'll be between major blood issues, uh, by Wednesday, and if that's true, I'll be able to go to the, uh, nature park meeting on Thursday evening. So that's all I have to report.
Yeah, awesome. Well, you've, uh, helped lighten the mood here, uh, make it a little more positive tonight with that happiness sign you have in the background.
Oh, yeah, well, it says. It says, it actually says, create your own happiness.
Oh, well. That's all right. We'll take that, too.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Sandra. Reese? Reese, do we have any, uh, any questions coming in?
We have, uh, no callers, uh, and currently six people watching on YouTube.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Maurice. Uh, so just out of curiosity, what do we see over the next couple of days on average? Uh, folks going and checking out the council meeting?
Uh, it's been averaging about sixty for council meeting. I haven't looked in a while, but, um, and at this point, we were, we were definitely averaging more than that, like more in the eighties.
Okay, cool. Um, I've talked to, uh, uh, several of our, our media partners and, uh, have made it very clear that once the, uh, restrictions have lightened up, we expect them back in council chamber. And I'm sure they will get, uh, get amused when they check this out tomorrow morning. Okay, uh, we do have one item in count, uh, in camera this evening, council. So if I could have somebody to move, uh, that we move into camera, councillor McBain, thank you, uh, seconded by councillor Dalham. All those in favor? Any opposed? Oh, that motion is carried. So we'll take, uh, two minutes, uh, or less. Uh, thanks very much, uh, those who have taken the time to, uh, look in tonight. We appreciate you supporting Kimberly City Council.
Yeah, done that response to the last correspondence there. Thank you.